The Central LAC, and can you please take your seats? You can gather on any of these tables. The further away you are, the less you'll be able to hear me. So please come as close as you can. Later on, you can move around to whichever table. Make a choice at that point. But please gather round, including the councillors. Please get yourselves coffee, or tea, or water, and there's fruit, and I think some biscuits available. You can get up at any point during the meeting and go and help yourself. I think we'll do it that way, rather than having a standard break. So please go and help yourself if you need to. So, good evening, everyone. Tonight's meeting is open to the public, and a warm welcome to all of you who have come out tonight. My name is councillor Brian Holmshaw. I'm the chair of this local area committee, which covers four wards. Before I ask other councillors to introduce themselves along the frontier, I will hand over to the committee clerk to read out the housekeeping arrangements.
Thank you, Chair. Before we start, there are just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Please come and request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as to not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There's no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. And the assembly point is the top of this car park here, Banford Street Car Park, so out the doors and up the hill but remaining in the car park. The toilet facilities are just past the bar there. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcast via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collecting during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy by entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. We do have hearing loops available. If anyone would like to use one, please make yourself known. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So, can I ask that members of the council and officers around the table introduce themselves, please?
Hi, everyone. I'm Laura McLean, and I'm a councillor for Walkley Ward.
Hi, everybody. My name's Tom Hunt. I'm also a councillor for Walkley Ward.
Oh, I'm councillor Tony Mallon, and I'm councillor for Hillsborough.
I'm glad we're coming in some sick of the minutes tonight.
It's Brian Holmshaw, councillor for Broomhill and Sherravale.
I'm Andy Mail. I'm the community services manager for the North. However, I'm doing central today because the deal has been detained elsewhere, so he sends his apologies.
I'm Henry Noddle. I'm councillor for Hillsborough Ward.
Good evening. That's awful. I'm Martin Ferguson, councillor for Setty Ward.
Good evening. I'm Christine Gilligan. I'm a councillor for Hillsborough Ward, so welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, councillors. Before we proceed with the agenda, I'm going to explain how the meeting will work. So initially, what we're going to do is work with some formal business, and then we're going to move on to the Central Local Area Committee Budget Report. Andy Mail, to my right here, will give a presentation. We then do around 40 to 50 minutes where we have table discussions, debates, on the various subjects that are on your tables. This is where you've got an opportunity to move around, to find a subject that might interest you. And then the committee... ...will then give feedback on that at the end of the meeting. We're going to have a number of updates on the agenda from Andy, some interactive workshops and discussions, and then we're going to hear feedback from these discussions. Finally, we'll move on to public questions. Now, there are some forms which Andy Mail here will give out around the table, so you can fill in your questions, so we can then deal with them at the end. Final, final thing. Minutes of the last two meetings, which the councillors will hopefully pass. Okay. So, item two is apologies for absence.
Thanks, Chair. So, we've received apologies from councillors Angela Argenzio, Ruth Musgrove, John Wright, and councillor Douglas Johnson, maybe a little late coming to meet him.
Thank you. I did want to say there's one section which I've not read out, which is in connection with presentations. So there will be two presentations. One is on allotments, the second on urban food growing and food systems. First one will be James Musgrave, allotment officer, and the second one, a representative of Regather. So, item three. This is a standard request that we ask, that there are no items that require exclusion of the press and the public. Item four, declarations of interest. Again, a standard item. Do any members wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business occurring on the agenda? So if so, you can raise your hands. So any of the members on the front table here? No. Thank you. On to item five. This is the Central Local Area Committee Budget Report, and I'm going to hand over to Officer Andy Mail to give a short update on the Central LAC spend.
Evening. If you can't hear, I've told a boot to go. It's my hand. Sometimes I talk too quickly and too quietly, so I apologise in advance. Each LAC has a budget of £100,000. In October of last year, the LAC decided to split that money onto £25,000 per ward basis, and they've been spending against our budgets and project dates. Within the minutes of the pack at the end of the meeting, there will be a full breakdown of what the money's been spent on in each ward area. What I'm going to do now is just give a brief overview of that. So the five priorities for the LAC are transport and highways, environment, communities and neighbourhoods, community safety and crime, business employment and skills. The total expenditure up until beginning February this year has been £59,310, and the annex with those details in detail will be in the minutes as I come out. And the remaining £40,000 is being, the projects being worked up and which is be allocated, and that will be spent by the end of this financial year. What I thought I would do very briefly is just highlight here some of the things that the money has been spent on to date. So from Sherravale, or Broomhill and Sherravale Ward, there's been 40 Christmas trees purchased for Sherravale businesses, that was £1,600. Hillsborough Ward, Sheffield Wednesday Community Foundation run a sport in craft camp for ages five to 12, £1,200. Rudyard Road, Friends and Residents, £440 to help convert wasteland into community garden. St Mary's and City Ward, Community Fund Day and Three Family Activity Days, £2,000 for local residents in the area. Homeless and Ruthless at Christmas in City Centre, Christmas Food Provision, The Archer Project, ongoing support for clients, £500. Walkley, Zest Day, Jamaican Independence Day Celebration, that was £690. And the LAC have also put a substantial amount of money into the Upper Thorne Library, just over £6,000, to help the new library machines, because that's actually used by people. So that's the kind of thing the money's spent on by the councillors in consultation with local people and the plan. And the LAC team, their help, let up and do that, so it's an ongoing part of what we do. The other thing to mention, that each LAC and each ward has put £800 in towards the community of Tormir, and there's leaflets on your table about this, and there's also some leaflets at the back, I think which I just got somewhere, the cost of living. If you want to go, you need to sign on. Details are on there. We did it last year when I was part of this team, it was very successful. If you can get on and go, it's well worth doing. It's a very enjoyable evening, and it's quite enlightening. How's it, Chair? Oh, do I have to do a recommendation?
Do you want to give the...
I'll do a recommendation.
Yep. Do you want to give the date for it?
It's on the 12th of March, doors open at 5pm for the LAC. Neil.
Thank you. So there's a recommendation from the Budget Report. So the recommendation is that the Central Local Area Committee, that is us gathered at the front here, note the expenditure against the 2024/25 £1,000 budget to address local priorities in the Central LAC community plan, as detailed in the report. And the second recommendation is to note that remaining funds will continue to be used to address the priorities in the community plan. I think we're probably aiming not to have any remaining funds. That's the objective. So there is an opportunity here for the committee to consider the recommendations, or to simply vote for or against that report. Did I say... I said £1,000, and it's £100,000. Apologies. So, yes, on the committee, are we minded to accept the two points of the report?
Agreed.
That's very straightforward. Thank you. So that was agreed. Item six. We're going to move on to presentations. So the item six is the allotments presentation, and on this I'm going to hand over to James Musgrave, who I work with quite regularly in another capacity. And James is the allotment manager from Sheffield City Council, and he's going to present this item. So I've got you down for 10 minutes.
It's on the engine.
Yeah.
Yeah, just press the red button.
Right then. We're working? Can we hear me? Yeah, fantastic. I'm going to walk down here. Is that okay? Yeah, fantastic. Can everybody see? Right then. Just a brief introduction to myself. James Musgrave, the allotment manager, been in post, coming on for two years now. It's a fantastic service to run and manage. Great, fantastic team. The tenancy we have is amazing. And just a thank you for elected members, officers, and yourselves for the invite to do this presentation. Next slide, please. So what is an allotment? Can it be... Before I start, how many people have got an allotment? Brilliant. We've got someone converted. That's brilliant. Fantastic. I can see some familiar faces. So what is an allotment? A legal term. It's a garden that is wholly maintained and cultivated for the production of vegetables and fruit. That's pretty simple. Next slide. For those with allotments, the National Allotment Society is a great resource to use, and the quote there is fantastic for us. Nearly every person said they love their allotment gardens. Comes from the fresh air, homegrown produce, healthy lifestyle, and like-minded people this activity offers. Okay. So how do we as a council provide our statutory duty? We manage nearly 4,000 plots across 78 sites. We manage tenancies, and we are monitored. KPIs, key performance indicators, are the number of plots against the number of actual elect plots we have. So that's the way we sort of, a key target for us. The map on the right-hand side, just go back for one. Thank you. Gives an indication of our sort of spatial spread across the city. The ones in the bigger blue circles are the bigger sites, the huge one down towards the south, that's May's Brook, and that gives an indication there's 400, just over 400 plots on that site. And as the dots get smaller, then obviously the number of plots on the site get smaller as well. Next slide. We undertake as a team of, myself as the allotment manager, one FTE, so one full-time equivalent just above two allotment officers. We have one business support as well, FTE, and we are fully funded from the rents we receive. We receive very little external funding for the management of the sites. So part of the role of an allotment officer and myself as the manager, we undertake site and plot inspections, just to give an indication of some of the challenges we do face as a service, some of the antisocial behaviour, some of the misuse of plots, so huge fires, disposing of household waste on those. Storing of inappropriate materials, and then obviously the simple one for us is the unkept plot, and we have to sort of manage that so we get a turnover of people off the waiting list. If people aren't cultivating according to the allotments act, then we'll serve notice and get somebody on to the plot who will grow produce for the family. Next slide, please. We undertake health and safety inspections, so that's one of the old allotment sheds, greenhouses, which is collapsing. We'll be actively removing those to ensure safety. Next slide. Site improvements, this is Finchwell Road, problems with antisocial behaviour, breaking of plots. As a service, we allocated some of the funding to secure that site, installing new fencing along the boundaries. Next slide. And then obviously the allotment competition, I can see a familiar face on there. So we have the winner of the Bolton Cup on the right-hand side there. The Bolton Cup, as we've recently found out, is a... It's, the history is absolutely amazing on that. Solid Silver, we had it, it was, is it Handmade? William at Handmade, he kindly donated his time to restore the cup to its former glory, and unearthed some of the hallmarking on that cup, and it really is spectacular what that means to a lot of people in Sheffield. Next slide. So just to give you a bit of brief background to allotments, I can't see there. They're community assets, they boast health and wellbeing, sustainable growing spaces, biodiversity green corridors. They're a very valuable part of Sheffield's history. Margaret Bolton, who did some research on Sheffield's allotments, she stated back the first allotments within the city dating back to 1736. The map on the right-hand side, that's 1822, is quite familiar. Historically, you can see Neeps End down there. The nice patterns on the ground there are actually leisure gardens, allotments. So we've got maps dating back to 1822, just as the city was sort of growing in space. Often they were sort of allocated as not wasteland, but land that was assigned for future development, either industry or housing, and it was a ways off setting, a useful allocation of that land until it was built and or sort of industrialised. Next slide. Why have an allotment? Personal value for growing your own food. That's ultimately what the allotments are for. Statistics show that if you manage an allotment right, you can get plenty of food off there to sustain you and sort of help with the weekly shop as we are now. Next slide. Health and wellbeing is very important, this whole aspect about holistic green space, being outdoors, the activity that comes with it, keeping fit with that. Next slide. Rich green spaces, so that's actually biodiversity, ecology, sustainable, fantastic opportunities, especially in the urban context. The plots on the photos on the right-hand side, there's one of Paulbury Gardens, that's right in the middle of the city centre, just the sort of south boundary of the Central LAC. The picture on the left-hand side with the black things, that's sustainable harvesting of water, that's up at Walkley Way. Next slide. Social and community. Recognise somebody there. Again, this is, we have a number of societies who, very similar to Friends of Groups in green space, they help support the work we do, they help other tenants come along with their plots and give them ideas and support with work when they're struggling with it. We have a, we think around 20 community plots. The way we tenant plots, we have to have an individual who's registered as the tenant, but we cannot actually find the actual figures on the number of people who represent community groups. So they'll be involved in supporting adult learning, people with disabilities. There's a whole host of allowing people to access allotment space without actually owning their own allotment or tenancy in their own allotment. Next slide. So just to give you an overview of Central LAC, yep, Central LAC. So seven plots, 257 plots, there's 364 on the waiting list, so it gives you scale of the challenge we face as a service. Centrally, spatially in the Central LAC, it's very difficult for, there's so much pressure on land use in terms of density of housing and land use. So you can see from the map, we're very limited in those seven plots. Just outside that boundary, there's sort of Rivlin Valley, which sits into a different LAC, it sits into the South West LAC. Is that right? South, yes, South West LAC. So we're not limited, but however, we do understand there's challenges within that Central LAC, and meeting this, what is allotment legislation in terms of what the council's statutory provision is, we should be addressing that, and that's one of the big challenges for me as a, well, me as a manager and our team as a service. The graph on the right-hand side gives that bit more detail about the challenge. It's not just Central LAC where we struggle to meet the demand. East, north, there's no, there's no sort of actual meeting of those targets in terms of the people on the waiting list. The interesting one about it is we have one of the biggest unused sites in the city, in the central area, Smalley Street. There's the majority of those, 84 plus... There's, the majority of those, 84 plots are on just on one site. We are, we'd like to bring that site back into use. We have constraints in terms of we are the resource and our capital, or, or sorry, the money available to spend over and above our investment across the whole of this state. We just can't finance that unfortunately. There may be some issues with land contamination on there, with previous use and previous dumping of waste on there, flytipping. We hope to address that. It's something that's, that's key to us to sort of, it's one site where we could potentially alleviate that waiting list in this area. Next slide. How to get in touch with us? Just a bit of stuff on there for you all to use. There's also the, that sheet is on there. So, there's QR code you can scan into there. There's also our website on there if anybody's interested in a plot or further information from the team. That concludes that presentation. Questions now or questions round the table?
So, actually, you've flown through that, so that's brilliant. So, we've actually got a little space for questions. What we normally do is we ask people to bring them to the tables.
Okay.
And, you know, you'll be facilitating one of the tables, the one over there. So, so a couple of quick questions maybe? We can fill, fit those in. And then any others, bring them to the table. And James is going to stay with us for the rest of the evening.
Yep, yeah, that's fine, that's fine, yeah. If I could have two questions, preferably one from a current tenant and one from somebody who'd be interested in having a plot or is out, not a tenant, if that'd be, that'd be fine. So, if I could have a question from a tenant, if anybody's willing? How's about anybody who's not tenant? Yes, please.
What's your timescale for taking action against people who don't action?
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I've got the sore throat as well. Do you have a formal timescale for taking action against tenants who don't cultivate their allotments? You know, every year. I'm not saying who, but my experience is that there are always a few.
What we consider, is that working? Yep. What we consider to be enforcement is the action we undertake on non-cultivation. So, in terms of the target is when we do a plot inspection, so we do two, two site inspections per year. If we were to pick them up, the next one is due late spring, so May time. We'd have a wander around the sites, identify those people who aren't cultivating in, in, in line with our policy and guidelines. The allotment acts give us the enforcement process to be able to address that. So, the first point of call would be an advisory. So, we, it's what we consider to be a non-cultivation letter. So, that gives them one month to take the action. So, once they've, once that month's passed, we'll then re-inspect. And then if they're still not cultivating, we can legally serve a notice, a non-cultivation notice. So, that is, that would be another month. So, we're talking two months. And then we can actually serve the termination. The way we operate as a council, we have to consider qualities. So, there may well be some further issues that we're not aware of. We would may then give the tenant additional time to rectify that problem. But yeah, the minimum time's two months.
I am surprised, I didn't realise it was that long.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, but we have to take individual tenants. We have to treat everybody individual. There may well be what we consider to be extenuating circumstances. And we have to be aware of that. And we'd like to keep people, we give people as much opportunity, but it does get to the legal point where we understand the waiting list. There are people on the waiting list that will cultivate the land better. And then that's when we'll take the enforcement. We can legally take that process. We are currently reviewing all the rules and policy. So, hopefully, addressing some of these lags of timescale, I suppose, is the word to use. There's also issues on officer time as well. We are dragged from pillar to post in dealing with. So, it may well be that we can't get to the re-inspection on the 32nd day because something else has come up. It's very, given the 81 sites, we have what is two FTE equivalents, so myself and the two allotment officers who share a post, getting around the 81 sites, nearly 4,000 sites, as well as everything else that enquires that come into the service. Yeah, it's, it's challenging, but we do, we do have to, because of the waiting list, we are aware that we need to move things as quickly as possible. Okay, that's answered. Yeah.
So, sorry, Simon, there was a lady who had a hand up over here, I'm sorry. So, a lady, oh, okay. Thank you. Simon.
Thank you. I want to just stress that allotments are very much a leisure activity. If you can call digging in January and weeding and gardening organically, growing food, it's sort of, it's hard work and it's a very good leisure activity. But the question is about, you haven't mentioned diversity at all. And I wonder whether you, you must routinely collect diversity statistics and whether you can say what your conclusions about gender and about ethnic minority backgrounds and about age, that you're promoting in line with council overall policies.
It's a good point, Simon. It is, from a, from my point of view, the service we have, it does engage with such a diverse communities. We're spread out across the city. And yeah, it is, it is something. In terms of the actual monitoring of that information, we are doing the customer survey this year. The last one was done, I believe, in excess of seven years ago. So, it's, it's well out of date. Yet we have got plans in this place as soon as we get out of the invoicing, which is a very busy time for us. It is one of the priorities we're going to be undertaking as early spring to undertake that customer survey and understand within that there'll be the qualities monitoring data, which we're hopefully getting from that, we'll, we'll assess what we've got. At the moment, we only ask when we have tenants. It's a very basic date of birth, male, female. It's very limited in the information we've got. But yeah, it's, at the moment, it's, it's in plan. In terms of the, like I said, the diversity in terms of where allotments are provided, yet they're everywhere, but it can be better spatially. We know there's gaps within this, what is the green and open spaces strategy when there's this, this need to have an accessible green space within 10 minutes walking. We see the gaps, we've seen the gaps on the map tonight. There's huge holes in that. And we'd like to address that. But again, it's the challenge of land space, land use. But as a statutory service, we do sit within the planning, the PPG 18, I believe. So, within the planning frameworks, allotments should be taken account of along with playgrounds, green space provision and everything else that comes under that, that green and open space strategy. That answer questions, Simon?
Work in progress.
Yeah, yeah. It is, yeah, it is, Roland Longhurst, who's my live manager, we've made a commitment between ourselves to get that customer survey out and then look at this equality information when we get back on that and make sure we are ticking all the, all the boxes for that provision. Okay.
Fabulous. Thank you very much. Hand it back to one of the officers. I'll just say, from my part, I actually, I chair another group, which is the Allotments Advisory Group, which is the stakeholder group for, for allotments. And everyone is, from each allotment is entitled to come along. Three or four times a year, we hold this. The other thing that we do annually is the, is the allotment awards as well. And there is a, one of those is a biodiversity award as well. I think we should be having some discussions. Actually, there's something mentioned in the last one, which me and, which has just reminded me and you to have a chat about, which was about a young people's award. We, someone raised that. And we thought, well, I thought that was a good idea. So, I need to have a natter about that one. In the meantime, let's move on to our next presentation. Who I believe, I haven't met you before, Alice. And it's Alice Farmery from Regather, who's here to give a presentation on, on this item, which is urban food growing and food systems. If we have a bit of time, we will have some questions. Otherwise, feedback on the tables.
Okay, perfect. So, hi everyone, my name's Alice Farmery and I'm a research associate at Regather Cooperative. And I'm here with my colleague Gareth, who also works at Regather. So, I've just got a few slides to talk a little bit firstly about who Regather is and the work that they do around food and food growing in Sheffield. And then I've got a few slides just talking about a recent research project that we've been involved with, which was around mapping urban horticulture in the city. And there's a few overlaps with James's talk and hopefully it will complement quite well some of the things that he was saying. So, if we could just go to the next slide, thank you. So, some of you might have heard of Regather if you get a veg box with us. That's how most people know Regather. But we're a cooperative and we're based in Highfield. And we have a few different projects. So, we have our veg box scheme, which delivers organic vegetables to households all over the city. We also have a market garden on the outskirts of the city where we grow vegetables for the box scheme. Alongside that, we're involved in research projects, education and other kind of community development type activities around building more sustainable food systems within Sheffield. I've also put a bit of information about Chef Food on there as well, just because another part of my job is to co-casitate the Growing and Composting Working Group that Chef Food hosts. So, Chef Food is the city's food partnership and they're a group of different individuals. There are some people here who I know have attended Chef Food events in the past, so that's great to see. And yeah, it's a really good group where people can collaborate and work together on a variety of different kind of food, food-focused topics. So, if we go on to the next slide, I've just made this little graphic which represents kind of the areas where Regather works because people can get quite confused about all the different things that we do. So, this kind of maps out quite nicely all the different activities that we're involved in and how they kind of knit together. So, if anyone wants to come and talk to Gareth and I at any point this evening, we can give you lots more information about Regather and all the different activities that we're involved in. So, if we can just go on to the next slide. So, this kind of overlaps a little bit with what James was saying about why we want to focus on food growing and why we think it's a valuable and important area to work in, in Sheffield. So, these are just some of the benefits, which you probably are all aware of already, about growing food within cities. So, it's not just health and wellbeing. It boosts the local economy, helps with sustainability, biodiversity, lots of the sustainable development goals, which I know are a really big priority in local policy. And also building more resilience into the food system, which is becoming more and more important in terms of economic, political and like environmental instability. So, if we go on to the next one, just a few facts and figures about diet and health. So, there's a lot of health and dietary inequality across the city and in the, in the local area. So, only 45% of adults currently consume the recommended five or more portions of fruit or vegetables a day. So, that's something which we're trying to address obviously through our work around food growing and food systems. And more deprived communities are more likely to have poor diets and less access to more healthy and nutritious food, which then has implications around disease and life expectancy. So, alongside diet, access to nature is something which is kind of a co-focused to us. So, helping people access green spaces has lots and lots of health benefits alongside opportunities for social connection and physical exercise. So, the next slide is just more about that resilience, which I was talking about earlier. So, some of you might have seen that Tim Lang recently published a report about food resilience in the UK. So, there was lots and lots of really interesting information in that report that I would recommend. It's like freely available to find on the internet. And at Regather, we really try and build a more resilient food system from the ground up. So, that's by strengthening the local economy, improving people's access to food growing and food growing opportunities. So, a little bit of information here from Sheffield's food strategy, which just, which covered lots of really interesting points, not just about food growing. But the bit that I picked out was the statement that if we're going to safeguard our food system for the long term, then the food we eat and the way we use our land needs to change. So, there was a commitment in that food strategy that the council would work with local communities and partners to identify spaces where food production and provision can be accommodated. So, a research project recently that I was working on in partnership with Jill Edmondson from the University of Sheffield, was involved in mapping Sheffield's past, present and future urban horticulture. So, this was designed to build on previous research that had been carried out around the land that was available for growing and the potential of this land. So, a paper published by Jill in 2020 found that if 10% of available land was used for food growing, then it could feed 15% of the city's population in terms of their fresh fruit vegetable requirements. And then another recent project, which I wasn't directly involved in, but was carried out a few years ago, was called My Harvest. And that worked directly with allotment holders to kind of help quantify and weigh the vegetables that they were growing and work out how that has an impact on the city's food system as a whole. So, both those papers are available online if anyone's interested in looking at those. So, this is a more recent project that I was involved in. And this was the one where we were using both workshop and interview data, going out and talking to farmers, growers, allotment holders, and also using geographical information systems, which is remotely sourced satellite data to map the existing land, which was available for food production. And then using kind of quite complicated data around green space analysis to work out what land potentially could be used in the future. And this really links into what James was saying about the demand for food growing spaces and allotments outstripping the current supply. So, we were trying to see how we could potentially alleviate some of that demand. And alongside that, we really wanted to understand some of the motivations, barriers, challenges and opportunities that growers faced, like by going out and talking to people. So, this image on the side of the screen is a zine which we created as a research output. And we've got a few of those on our table if anyone's interested in finding out a bit more about that project. I think I've put some of the results on the next slides. So, this was just some of our mapping work and the sites that we identified. I think on James's presentation, he had 78 sites and 3,600. I think I just rounded it down for the purpose of simplifying this presentation. But this was some of the sites that we identified. As you can see, there's a really big variety, ranging from very small pocket parks. I think the one, the Frog Lane, one near Frog Lane was potentially the smallest one, was only a few kind of square metres large. And then that ranged right up to kind of peri-urban market gardens around the Regather Farm and the Moss Valley Market Garden. So, those kind of really big, big-scale projects. But they were all very valuable and served different purposes in their own right. So, this is a map which we created. It's slightly hard to see. We're still in the process of trying to work out how we can best create our maps so that they're easy to read. But you can hopefully get a little idea of the different sites and their spread around the city. It's got the colours, is the PPI DSI, which is the Priority Places for Food Index. So, we tried to map. So, number one are the areas which are high priority for, for like food interventions. So, they've got high levels of food poverty. So they've got high levels of food poverty and poor diets, inequality, lack of access to existing growing spaces. So the areas that are more deprived in terms of food access and provision are in red. And then the ones that are least deprived are in the green colour. So kind of combining those bits of data and those indices was also a really interesting part of the project. Go on to the next one. Yeah, so this next map, also very difficult to see it up this scale, just shows where we identified that there was potentially land available that was suitable for expanding urban food production. And we, yeah, we not only looked at where kind of physical space was available, we also looked at criteria like slope, aspect, size, ownership, access to water and electricity, to make sure that we were only choosing sites that were potentially viable and suitable for food production. On to the next one. So yeah, I mentioned that as part of our research, we held some interviews and workshops. And these were some nice quotes that we got from participants. Some people here might have taken part in those workshops. They were really interesting. And we've got a bit more information as well on our stall about those. And go on to the next one. So these were some of the key barriers that we found when talking to people that was in the way of either growing more food or starting more kind of food growing projects in the city. So allotment waiting lists and availability is on there alongside like things like policy, accessing funding and investment, routes to market for locally grown organic produce. And then, yeah, we do have some things about diversity, inclusion, training, accessibility. So lots and lots of really relevant and interesting points came up through those discussions. Go on to the next one. I think this is, so as well as looking at barriers, we also tried to be kind of proactive and forward-thinking and think about opportunities and what we could do to improve the situation and change things. So here are some potential opportunities which came up in the discussion. And some of those we're actually building on now. So the Right to Grow came up there. We're working with Incredible Edible to host a workshop over the coming months to explore that further. We're working with Ben Arnold from the City Council to work with the local authority to kind of build pathways to helping community groups and individuals access land. So we've already started to work on some of the opportunities that came up as part of this research project. And yeah, so that's a bit of a whistle-stop summary. But if anyone has any questions, please feel free to ask them now or come and find me later on in the meeting or during the discussion time. And I'll be happy to tell you more information about anything I've spoken about.
So if there are any questions, a couple of questions, if, we can just about squeeze them in. If not, please join the table. There's also a stall at the back as well, a Regather stall. So the two members of Regather who were around tonight to probe and find out more about food growing. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Alice. Right, so next section is where we start to move on to the roundtable discussions and an opportunity for you to get yourself a tea or coffee and a biscuit. So before we do that, I'm going to mention the, if anyone wants to discuss funding with members of the LAC team, Abu and Messar are going to be on the table at the front there. Or round and about, anyway, certainly at the front, one of them. And they will be able to advise you on any funding that you need. What time's that I got here? A number of stalls are at the back. So I spoke to Emily earlier from Revlin &amp; Co, who's over there. Amongst other things, Emily is here to provide information on the Community Fridge Project. So there on that one. Regather, as I mentioned earlier, who do veg boxes and other food projects. Percy Street Collective, yep, remember you from last time? We had the last LAC meeting. What else we've got here? I think we'll just move on to the facilitators. So we've a number, we've a number of tables, people to facilitate them. So Asher Mohammed, hello, Asher. So you're going to be operating the Cost of Living table and gathering ideas for next year. That's the main focus. So that's Asher over at the back. Jane Musgrave, you've met earlier on allotments. She's on this table here. Food growing include information on the Regather Farm. Alice, you are going to be on one of the tables over here. Yep, on the, to me, the left-hand side of the room. Community Orchards and Fruit Growing. So Gareth's going to be covering that one. We've got a table for you as well, so that's over that side on Q. I can't see them from here. And these people have got years of experience between them. So please do make use of the advice that they can provide. We're going to spend the next, let me have a look at what time we've got. Hopefully 40 minutes, so up to 40 minutes, we'll have, be able to chat and discuss on those four tables plus anything on the funding that you might want to raise. Anything else? Andy? I've seemed to have covered everything. Right, so, oh, the other thing is, if, if you want to move to different tables, please do move to different tables. You don't have to stand. So we'll gather back and we'll do some feedback in 40 minutes. Thank you. Right, so some of the groups have gathered information from their discussions. Oh, actually, before I do that, I'm going to mention on most of the tables, we have this, which is, so this is from Roots and Futures. So Roots and Futures are doing a community consultation at the, which building is it at? It's at the Makers Shed at Hillsborough Park. And I brought these along because they're actually, excuse me, we're very close to that area. So it's a consultation that's about the historic building, which is the Park Lodge. And they have decided to speak to local people and see what future can be made of it. The number of folks have in the past said, oh, we can do this with it and that with it, but it hasn't come to anything. So they would like your involvement on the 8th of March at the Makers Shed in Hillsborough Park, 11 till 2pm. And it is a drop-in, so you can just go along there and whatever. If anyone has the opportunity for their shop or a public notice board to put this poster up, they have asked, please, can you do so to advertise it? Tea and cake will be available. I have more copies at the front as well. Right, as I was saying, so we've got feedback from some of the groups. I think, should we, should we start with Martin at the front? Are you okay to make us a start? If you can describe what the subject was and some of the things, what people were saying. Just a couple of minutes, please.
Just a couple of, yeah, I've got some words, yeah. So yeah, the Community Orchards and Fruit Growing Table had a really good discussion. Gareth from Regather was our facilitator. It was really good, useful stuff. Didn't really realise we should be taking notes until about halfway in. But that was just because we were all having a nice chat. So yeah, just a few things. So we're talking about the importance of maintaining trees. So easy to plant trees, but actually you need to put in the work and have a proper maintenance plan in place, or it needs to be maintained over the long term. Kind of linking into that is kind of the pruning aspect. We talked about why some trees stopped fruiting and that was suggested that pruning was quite critical. So there's a suggestion that we should run pruning courses or pruning courses should be available. So a bit of knowledge sharing going on so we can make the best use of our fruit trees. There's also a suggestion to establish a voluntary pruning team or two or three on that kind of line. And then there was talk about the need for more new orchards. And there was a concept of city orchards that Gareth phrased, that's coming out of the Edible Tree Network. So that's kind of, I think you said there were six city, potentially six city orchards. It was about maintaining them, their existing orchards. And we want to keep them going and not let them fall by the wayside. And yeah, there's suggestions that we kind of basically, yeah, need more fruit trees, dig up public lawns and grow fruit trees. Yeah, and then, yeah, establish new ones. And then just a couple of other little bits. Something people might not know, we had quite a big chat about Regather being able to turn your apples into pasteurised juice. So if you've got leftover apples from your apple tree, you can take them to Regather and get a bottle of pasteurised juice. And that will help fund the maintenance of those city orchards. And then we were talking about kind of the value of community supply chains. That links into this Edible Tree Network of like several different volunteer organisations and different organisations with some councils involved in maintaining and building up the Edible Tree Network in Sheffield. And then, yeah, last thing was kind of the importance of knowledge sharing about how to use fruit and from fruit trees and kind of being positive about it as well. Lots of negativity in the world, let's do something positive. And there was talks about different festivals and maybe a party.
That sounds good. Okay, thank you very much, Martin. If anyone else wants to give feedback from their table, please, please say. Put your hands up if you, right, thank you, thank you, Alice.
Just to try and summarise what we talked about. So we had some great conversations around GIS and how we identified land and the criteria that we used in our mapping project. We talked about some of the conflicts that can take place when trying to find land for food growing and how that can sometimes conflict with other priorities around biodiversity and using land for kind of insects and wildflowers, and also leisure like parks and whether we should be using public community spaces like parks and playing fields for food growing. We talked about schools, so lots of really interesting questions around education and the work that we Regather does with schools and how we can tie in existing curriculum objectives around STEM and maths and English targets to increase the uptake of food growing education within schools. And then we moved on to talk a little bit about some of the lack of education and training opportunities that the city faces and how that provides a barrier to food growing and how that could maybe be increased. Opportunities for a community mentoring programme that would give experienced food growers and people who have worked in that sector a chance to teach others and mentor them, similar to a community composting mentoring programme, which used to exist, I think, in the city, which doesn't quite happen now. And then somebody came up with a really good idea around equipment libraries for sharing tools that would help people who were just starting out with food growing projects. And then we talked also a little bit about how to increase access to land to empower more deprived communities to reduce reliance on the food bank and supermarket surplus food model. So, yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much, Alice. Anyone else? Yes, hi, Asher.
Hello.
I forgot to mention this at the beginning.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
If you want to mention it.
Yeah, I can. So I heard a lot of great feedback on the leaflet that I made. And also the different venues, community centres, libraries, that have a lot of amazing things going on to tackle the cost of living and just to have a safe space to support. So I collected all the data and did it into like accessible, simple symbols for people and put it all into one page. So I've took quite a few notes on amendments and further venues that I could possibly add and also heard great feedback about that, so thank you. I've also took a few notes on places that I can send it to, places where it can be distributed. I also heard some feedback on just mapping out areas a little bit more within specific areas. So within Hillsborough and within Brimhill-Sharravale, where places are a little bit more isolated. So I think it takes a bit more than just the community services to do that and between services to sort of map out what area needs, what kind of facilities. And I think a bit more mapping needs to be done, and that's what I've heard so far. Apart from that, I've heard a lot of great stuff and I'll be looking to spread this out further. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Asher. Anyone else would like to make their notes known? These, these notes will go forward. I keep stressing this, I go around the tables and I stress that they will go forward. They go to various committees, so they're not just lost. You know, they're not just us taking them down for the sake of it. I think that's, that provides some reassurance to folks. If not, I will move on to the next section, which is public questions and petitions. So we've had a couple of public questions. Are they things that we can answer at this meeting or do they need to go forward to a different committee?
The one I've got will need to go forward to a different committee. Can I really count?
Yes, yes, please do.
Yeah, so this is, Brian held a meeting two weeks ago with assistance from Exeter Road Traders because they've not had the money from some of the, like Hillsborough Togethers had and some of the other groups had, so they were saying, what could they do? So one of the questions asked there was, why has the pavement and roadway on the Ecclesford Road shopping area not been brought up to standard as agreed in the AMI contract? It's a premier shopping retail road in the city and it's in a poor state of repair.
So I think, I think that's one for TRC, Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee. Thank you. So if you can forward that to them, Claire. Thank you. There it is. Yeah, we do have, a hand up.
Sorry, I didn't realise, we were meant to write down questions. I'd love to ask the panel, if now's the right time, if that's okay. I'd like to ask about compost and domestic food waste. So there are many local councils across the country that do collect domestic food waste and then collectively using... and then collectively, using high intensity heat, turn it into compost that they can then sell back to members of the public. And I know that Sheffield City Council is in a sort of an abusive marriage relationship with Veolia. And I wondered if anyone was able to be kind of transparent and honest about this like relationship and the long term contract with Veolia and when that might end and when changes to waste collection might be enabled. I just think it's bonkers that, you know, we're a city, a green city, an outdoor city of food growers and outdoor lovers, et cetera, but our domestic food waste is either going in the bin or in our own compost bins, that's fine, but not everyone can afford a hot compost bin. And so therefore surely more sense to collate the resources, to collect domestic food waste and to use one centre to generate compost that can then be sold back. Any thoughts on that at all?
Absolutely. Not my area of competence, I'm afraid, that one. But I've got a hand up. Right, who would like to answer?
I'll make a start because I am on the Waste of Streets Committee, which is responsible for that. So yes, we are in a long term contract with Veolia and that meant that we can't take the food waste out of the waste stream because that would reduce the volume of waste that we give to Veolia and we're contracted to provide them with the volume. So it wouldn't be financially viable at the moment until the contract ends and we can renegotiate it, which I've forgotten off the top of my head, but it's 2030 some.
2038.
38.
Can I just add to it? Yes, Douglas.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, that response is right, 2038 is the nature of a long term contract signed, I think, before any of us were here on the council. So yeah, it's, it's not a good deal for us. So the point is that as soon as compost goes into the waste bin, it becomes basically Veolia's property. And that's why you can't take it out and you can't divert it to other composting things that the council might want to do because it belongs to Veolia then. And if people take their stuff, the council has to pay them extra for not burning it or not composting it. But this is where the community comes in because if people in the community can put stuff not in bins or not into the waste system, but if we had things like local community composting sites, it doesn't even enter the waste stream. So it's none of Veolia's business. So ideas there.
Okay, Tom, Tom, would you like, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, I would just add to that. I mean, the colleagues are right that the contract was signed in 2001 and runs until 2038. What I would say though, is that the, the waste that is collected goes to the energy plant and only 1% of Sheffield's waste goes to landfill as a result of that, which is a marked difference from other cities. And the waste that comes from, that goes into the, to the Burn Road incinerator, the heat and energy plant, powers the district heating network. So underneath large parts of Sheffield city centre, the hospitals, many homes in Upper Thorpe, in Nether Thorpe, in central Sheffield in particular, they are powered by heat that comes from our incinerator. That was a very foresight decision by the council in the late eighties and we've got the biggest heat network in the country. We've got plans to expand the heat network quite significantly. So there are ways in which this is benefiting the city to a great extent. So I would challenge back politely the, how the relationship with Veolia was described because this communities are getting and key institutions are really benefiting from the heat that comes from the way in which our waste is treated and only 1% goes to landfill.
Okay, so what I'm planning to do is move on from that, if we can.
Am I, am I just allowed?
Do you want to comment?
Yes, I'd love to comment about particulate matter, please, because I feel that not enough is being done to capture the air pollution around the incinerator. So it's all well and good that, that, you know, there's free heating, which is wonderful, but there is high rates of particulate matter that can have, you know, respiratory impacts and all sorts of things. So it's not, it's not, I, I still feel that we are in an abusive marriage actually with
Yes, could you pass on your name? You don't have to do it in public, but if you could pass on your name to Claire over here, thank you. I think that was a comment, yeah, okay. Right, we've got a couple of items to cover. I'm just noticing actually up on the screen, we've got food growing and composting. Maybe that is an area, that working group, to discuss hot composting. So, you know, if it's not already on the agenda for that, maybe it should be.
Very much is.
Thank you, thank you, Gareth. So two items to finish with, I think, just to check. Yes, so item 11 of the minutes of the previous meeting, which I've had a look at, and it's for the councillors here to, it's one of these official pieces of business that we do, to agree that or not. So can committee members approve, as an accurate record, the minutes of the previous meeting held on the 3rd of October 2024 and the informal meeting held on the 28th of November 2024? Is that agreed? Thank you. Last item is date of the next meeting. So we have a meeting date if it's agreed between us all. I think some councillors have been back and said, yes, that's fine. Thursday, the 8th of May is certainly a, a date which we're aiming towards having the meeting on. We'll just get a confirmation from all the councillors and then we can, we can say we'll have it then on that date. Time and location to be confirmed, but it will be in the Walkley Ward. Sharing further details in due course. Thank you for your engagement this evening and have a safe journey home. Thank you.